All right, so we are streaming.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, so I will call the meeting to order. And the committee will seek to convene an executive session since we're on General Laws 42-46-4 and 5 for the purposes of legal advice regarding terms of administrative contracts and consider and vote on motion to adjourn and convene a public session. I have a motion.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Chonis. Do you have seconds?
Second.
Second by, as an arrow on the favor of signifying by saying aye.
Aye.
Carrie, we will convene into executive session.
Great, we will be doing executive session as a breakout room. I will be opening the breakout room in just a moment. Please bear with me.
Hello, hi Cheryl.
Good evening, everyone. We're just checking on a few things and we'll be back in session. They'll reopen in public in a minute. For anybody who's joining, who will be presenting this evening, if you'd like to, if you, when you're not presenting, you can turn your video camera off and it will take you off the stream just to keep the view clear for everyone. Thank you.
I got the sun.
Really want that camera on? I got it. I got it. Yeah, I got it. Save your steps. Wave to me next time.
Oh, okay. Sorry. You're good to go.
Move to open session and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. A moment of silence, please. There were no votes taken in executive session. I will entertain the motion to seal the executive session minutes due until put the vote in for Island General Law 42-46, cut four and five.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Jonas. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Bo Shane. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. If you oppose. Next item. Next item is student liaison, Grant Wozencrup.
Grant submitted his, as a video this evening. Let me post that up and share it. Just give me a moment.
Good evening, everyone. I apologize for not being present. However, tonight I am representing East Providence in tonight's varsity volleyball game at Classical High School. In addition to volleyball, beginning this week are the seasons for the golf team, baseball team, outdoor track and field team, softball team, boys tennis team, lacrosse teams, and the unified basketball team. Throughout this month, students have been testing for the AP exam window. Students will be participating in exams for a chance at earning college credit for their courses that they take. This will be taking place until May 25th, and we wish everyone the best of luck. On May 17th, there will be a professional development day for teachers. The following Wednesday, May 19th, the NGSI will be administered to all juniors. Members of the junior class will be in person that day to receive the assessment. Additionally, the senior CTC celebration will be held at Pierce Field at 6 o'clock PM on the 19th. Senior prom will be held on May 21st at Rhodes on the Patuxet. On May 27th, the National Honor Society will induct new members of the junior class and junior book awards will be handed out at 6 o'clock PM. There will also be no school on May 31st in observance of Memorial Day. I'll close tonight honoring a student at East Providence High School. Paul Mandance finished second in his high school division for the region out of 87 teams on the stock market game. Paul managed to increase his initial $100,000 budget to $116,148 over the course of only a few months. Congratulations to Paul. Thank you and have a great evening.
Grant. Next item, please.
The next item is consent agenda with communications, correspondence, homeschool requests, and approval minutes for the April 13th, 2021 school committee meeting, the April 20th, 2021 special school committee meeting, and the April 12th, 2021 building committee meeting.
Under correspondence, I'd like to call your attention to the email that was sent to us from Joyce May at the library. The library project digitalized the East Providence High School yearbooks, and they are currently in the library and hope that people will come in and look at this. So the memo is in your under communication, and we'd like to thank the library director Joyce May and the East Providence Public Library for doing this project for East Providence. The next one is the resolution from Smithfield with the expressing support for the moratorium on the expansion of charter schools. Greg Demori, our representative, is sponsoring this. He is against the expansion of charter schools, and I would recommend, if you'd like, we can put a resolution together if you so desire, and I can have it at your next meeting for you to vote on. The expansion of charter schools means that there'll be more charter schools in the state of Rhode Island, especially in the Providence area, and of course, we all pay tuition for our students to go to these charter schools, and they don't provide some of the services that we provide here in the public school system, and they still get the same amount of money that public schools get. So if you so desire, I will do that for the next meeting. Those are two articles I wanted to call your attention to under communications.
Thank you, superintendent. Questions, comments? I'm stating a motion to accept the consent agenda. Sorry. Oh, sorry. I'm stating a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Brandle. Do we have a second? Second by Mitch Azanero, I believe?
Yes.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Next item, please.
The next item is PTO, PTA, et black reports.
I think it's Mary on here. I'll just, if anyone have any, I just wanted to, if anybody wasn't around for last week, if you look on social media, a lot of PTA and PTOs really, PTSAs stepped up for teacher appreciation week. They should be all thanked as well. It's a very hard year being on a PTA, PTO, PTSA this year. It's very hard to raise money. So I just want to thank all them for a great job done by all of them. They really did pull out all the stops for teachers and staff. Okay. Just, I see if Mary can... Oh, I'll just bring up the et black recognition because I don't know if she's coming on. Is on Thursday, June 3rd, and people will be getting invitations. So please RSVP because it is at a restaurant and we need a count on the people that will be coming.
Okay. Ben, just if you could just let us know if Mary Nazimento does join the meeting at some point. Thank you. Next item, please.
The next item is public comments one, agenda items.
We have a public comment on the agenda items. It's from Mary Texera. "The important tasks and responsibilities of an individual often go unnoticed because they do their job so well. We never get to see what life is like when they don't. A decision was recently made not to renew the contract of an employee of the district. I am not privy to the discussions and factors that went into the decision, but it is a decision that as time goes by will leave us realizing we have lost a great deal. Rebecca Gendron has always been the epitome of dependability, cooperation, excellence, and loyalty. We appreciated her every day in small and large ways. We all counted on her as secretaries, teachers, principals, administrators, whether she was assigning personnel to schools after job fairs, assisting with mass scheduling, entering students into Skyward, uploading report cards, answering our technical issues during state testing on the spot, leading PD sessions, generating reports, or crunching data. Rebecca did it with ease. The better question might be, what didn't Rebecca do? Over the years, her duties and responsibilities shifted depending upon what the district needed from her. Whatever that was, she did it effortlessly. Excuse me. Rebecca was the definition of loyalty. Whenever I had a question, I would reach out to her. She could have directed me to someone else, but she never did. She would always find answers to my questions. I emailed Rebecca on weekends, vacations, and sometimes at midnight, not expecting answers until she was available for work. She never failed to amaze me with an immediate response. She was always there for us, and she never made us feel like we were a bother to her. I believe if we asked the district staff about Rebecca's value to our community, he would rank near the top. It is hard to understand how we can be better without Rebecca Gendron. Maybe we don't need to find out. If you are lucky in life, sometimes you get a do-over. Maybe this is one of those times."
Thank you. Is that, is that the only?
That's all I have.
Thank you. Do you have public comments? Sorry. No additional? Thank you. Next item, please. The next item is the superintendent's report.
We are going to have open close at the old high school on May 29th from 9:00 to 2:30 in the afternoon. Tony Fiola and I are setting that up, and we've been sending out a message tomorrow to the community in regards to that. We wanted to present it to the school committee this evening. We've had many requests for people who want to come in and see the high school for one last time. And since June is going to be a pretty hectic month for us, we felt that having it the Saturday of Memorial Day weekend would be appropriate. So we open from 9:00 to 2:30, and we'll be setting up, and we'll be asking some volunteers to help us in the building during the visiting hours. Next on the agenda is the Teacher of the Year event, which is going to be.
Superintendent, I just, I just want to add that clarification. I know we talked about it last night, that because the elevator is not functioning in that building, the first floor is the only accessible floor to all visitors, because.
Correct, and we'll mention that in our invitation, Mr. Montero. Yes, thank you very much. Yes.
Through the chair, superintendent, are you, I know it's difficult on a Memorial Day weekend, but I guess we need to be sure that the spacing, depending on how many people show up, and.
We will be following all COVID restrictions. Yes, we will. Masks will be required, yes. Okay, and we will then be cleaning the building after as well. Yep. All right. Teacher of the Year event will be next Monday evening at the high school auditorium. We have sent out an invitation to the teachers and to their families. We will again be following all COVID restrictions. Mr. Fiola will be putting little stickers on the seat, will be three feet apart, and we will be inviting the school committee to be on the stage for the presentation of the Teacher of the Year on Monday evening, and I believe it's at 6 o'clock, high school auditorium. And we will announce the district teacher of the year at that time. I'd like.
I, I want to, I'm sorry, to interrupt again, but I do want to thank, I want to thank Mr. O'Shea for suggesting that we do this event separate and apart from the school committee meeting and honoring these teachers. You know, I think it, you know, she deserves credit for, for making that, you know, that mention in, in that request, that it be done separately so that they get their own time, so.
Yep. Thanks, Jessica. And we're going to have little refreshments too, COVID related, so we hope to get a good turnout. We, the invitation invited family. It's, it's an exciting time, and it's so worthwhile.
Wait, through the chair. There's not COVID on food. Just want to let you know that. COVID doesn't have food. COVID, no.
Okay. We're going to follow all those COVID requirements. I'd like to announce about Kent Heights. I received an email, and I forwarded you that email today. Kent Heights has been selected as one of the best buddy schools in the nation, and I think that's an outstanding credit to White Ann Letty and her staff at Kent Heights. So a shout out to Kent Heights, and I did forward you all that email today. I have before you in the packet, the reorganization of the administrative assistants for the new high school. There are their job descriptions, which we have gone over, Cheryl Maemoni, and I went over these job descriptions and had input from the union, so the union has approved these job descriptions. We are combining some of the jobs. We are eliminating the special ed secretary, which is a year-long sec, not a year-long, but school year. The nurse, which is school year, and the two attendance secretaries, which are school year as well. We are creating, besides the full-time secretary that is presently there, we are creating two additional full-time positions. All right, it's the elimination of these and the recreation. Those secretaries' duties will be shared. They will be framed in each other's duties. So if one is on vacation or one is out, the other can cover. There'll be an area of concentration for each one of the three in central office. One will be doing the duties of attendance and discipline for the deans. The other will be the special ed secretary. And then the third one will be the CTE secretary, because we're also eliminating that position that existed in the, in the CTE. Now, having said that, as I said, they will all be trained to do the task, cover for one another. We feel that this school is going to be open 12 months a year. It's going to be a very busy place. We also have staggered times as well, keeping someone in the main office until 4 o'clock in the evening. And again, this has been approved by the union, and Cheryl, would you like to say anything else? She was instrumental in the development of these job descriptions with the union. So Cheryl?
Yes, it took us a while to do, and we didn't want to miss anything. The one thing that really had some duties that were the principal's secretary. We didn't touch hers too much. We might have tweaked some of the things that we felt should belong in the other administrative assistance job that we took from her, so she could have more of a concentration on some of the things that she needs to take at hand. But the biggest goal in this is that if one person is out, or has to be out on a leave or extended time, everyone in that office should know how to be able to carry on and be able to take care of the things that need to be done in the course of their absence. So I think they're good descriptions, and, and we did have input from the union and the members.
Right.
Thank you.
And the one other I forgot to mention is the guidance secretary will assume some of the nurses, former nurses' secretaries' duties as well. So secretaries or administrative assistants have been displaced. We have two retirements on the agenda this evening, so no one is losing their job. They'll just be displacements. And after you approve these job descriptions, we will be, and after I have the contracts approved by the city council on May 8th, we will set up interviews for these positions at the high school, and Mr. Gibbons and his city will hold these interviews for the positions. The other positions are in the area of maintenance, and the position, the second position that will be available is Riverside Middle School. We're looking at also the secretaries at the two middle schools and just combining their duties as well. So if one's out, the other has the ability to perform the other one's duties. Now, I think that does take place, but we want to make sure that that is happening at our middle schools as well as our high school. The maintenance secretary is going to move up into the CTE, into administration, and we are going to put her with the secretary that Diana has, Maria Rodriguez, for transportation and enrollment. And she will have some additional duties in that job as well, so that Maria has also a backup, and when that maintenance secretary is out, Maria would be able to cover for the duties of that secretary. So we're training everyone. So, so that is the reorganization of the administrative assistants. Does anyone have any questions in regards to that?
Ben, the one question that I had, which I think you covered by saying that the, the guidance secretary would cover some of the duties of the nurse, because I noticed the hours, the nurses' secretary is, I think it's an 8 o'clock start, and school starts at 7:25.
The nurse's secretary's original job description?
No, no, the new one.
Oh, the new job description is an 8 o'clock start.
So it didn't seem to start at the start of school, and I.
Because that's, maybe, she may be, yeah.
Can we just make sure that that's?
We will. We'll double check with, Toby looked these over as well. Mr. Gibbons looked these over. We'll double check on.
Sure, absolutely.
Chair?
Yeah.
Um, a teacher just texted me, and it may be the best, if the school committee could all mute ourselves unless we're talking, because there's a massive echo at home, and she just says that this happens when her in-person students and her non-in-person students. So if we could all just mute ourselves too, because they can't really hear what we're saying. If that's possible, then when we're ready to talk, we just unmute, just like the people at home are doing.
Okay, thank you. The next thing on the agenda is the additional dean for the Waddington Elementary School. And this afternoon, I did forward you the data that I asked Principal Moore to send me, and I think that if you look at that data, that you will see there is reasons to have a second dean at Waddington. We asked in the first year that she hold off, and we evaluate the situation, and then we had COVID, and then we had COVID. But now that we expect to be back fully in person, and we look at some of these statistics that she has supplied to us, I would recommend, and it is for a vote this evening, that we do hire a second dean for the Waddington Elementary School.
Through the chair? I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay. Superintendent, I, I have the April enrollment here that we were sent, and just a question, since we're dealing with, we haven't spoken about enrollment tonight, but we did get the spreadsheet. What percentage would you say we lost in the past year or so? How many, how many, are we down 4%? Are we down 5% students? District-wide, district-wide.
Lost to what, Charlie? Distance learning?
Uh, no, no, not distance learning, Kathy. I'm talking about total student enrollment. I guess Diana put the, the chart in our packet. So I'm just, it looks like we've lost enrollment district-wide, and I'm wondering how, what's the percentages that we lose?
Diana, are you on? I'm not sure what the percentage is, Charlie. We lost more to homeschooling than normally in this given year. Parents did choose to homeschool. I think that probably, and Sandy's here and in charge of homeschooling, I think that almost doubled, didn't it, Dr. Fran? The homeschooling numbers?
Sorry, we did have more, but I don't know exactly how many more. It was quite a bit more this year.
Yeah. So.
And as far as the, I can get those numbers for you before the end of the meeting. I just have to go into another program. But we did lose probably kindergarten and early learning. We lost about 20% in, in that area. Not so much that they won't be coming back, but they either stayed at home, or they stayed at the preschool that they were at, you know, during, before COVID. So I know that for sure, but as far as the actual enrollment, it's fluid, but I'll get that before, I'll go look at it right now, actually.
And I guess it's difficult to project what will be, what the numbers will be next September, August?
Yeah, it is, Charlie. I do expect that the high school's going to attract more. I'm looking probably at an uptick there, but it's hard to say. I, I think most parents are going to have their students return to the public school systems, but I don't know what that projection would be yet, but we'll keep you posted.
Thank you.
Monthly basis, and it's always in your packet.
Right, it's just the, these are the probably the lowest numbers I've seen in a while, but I just had to ask that question. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So the next on the agenda is the update on vision testing, Mr. Tonis. You talked to us last week, and so we went out and we investigated what was happening. And I had told you that we had a machine at the high school.
Yes, you did.
Guess what? Peter Barilla Senior one day comes into the office and says, Kathy, guess what? That's not the high school machine. And I said, what? Really? He said, no, that belongs to us. I said, the Lions Club? And he said, no, the state. We borrowed the machines every year from the state to do the testing, and we must have left one that was here. And so it didn't belong to us. But Charlie, we have ordered five of our own machines. Craig is on here. He can tell you that. We expect them to be in within a month. They are, I talked to Diana this morning. She told me that that machine is being sent to each one of the schools. They will have completed by the end of the year, the vision testing for this year. The Lions naturally weren't in this year, and last year it was cut short because of the COVID, not allowing anybody into the buildings. But certainly, if they'd like to help out in the future, we will have our own machines. The high school in the equipment line item for the new high school actually has a, a machine, a vision machine for the clinic in the new high school. So we'll have a total of six of them in district.
Well, I appreciate your, your following up on that, this, and Mr. Barilla did follow up with me too. The, the, you know, it's, it's with respect all around, you know, everybody gets their teeth cleaned every six months, but vision is so important. How, how can we run a school district without, without the appropriate vision? And I know I wore glasses until I was 18 years old. I know people, my friends in the city had their eyes corrected over the years, and it's just so important. It's great that, that we are getting our own machines. And I'll just say this quickly. I did have a conversation with Dr. Bemke, who took over Tommy Antonian's practice, and she said, Charlie, there are huge shortages in optician assistants, opticians, optometrists. That is another shortage that I don't know if we can do anything at the CTC, but it's another field, a career field, with severe shortages. And, and so it might be something that our, some of our students might be interested in. It is, it is a very serious and, and very critical, and Lions International is, their, their biggest push besides cancer and children is eyesight. Eyesight internationally. So I, I appreciate you following up. I'm glad to hear that we're getting our own machines, because, you know, we're, we're a big district, and, and our children deserve whatever, whatever service we can provide them. And so thank you very much for following up on that.
You're welcome, and thank you for giving us that information about the optician technician, and we're going to look into that. We certainly could establish that under allied health programs. That's an excellent idea.
Lots of opportunity in those fields. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely. All right, in your packet, you have the summer maintenance plan, Mr. Fiola, and our custodial and maintenance staff are going to have an extremely busy summer with cleaning or trying to clean the schools with all of the summer activities that we have going on, as well as the furniture starting to move into the high school around July 12th. So he's going to be a very, very busy person this summer. So the plan there for our other schools are in your packet to review. And if you have any questions, please feel free to contact Mr. Fiola. And now I'd like to present to you Dr. Bowler, and Crystal Montero, and Amy Watson, who once again worked on statewide math curriculum for us for this year. We did ELA last year, and I want to thank these two coaches for the efforts and the time they put in. And I'd like to thank Dr. Bowler once again for overseeing this, and I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Bowler.
So, good evening, and the superintendent is coming to you tonight with a recommendation for the new K through 5 math curriculum. And so as the superintendent said, there were two people, and certainly along with these two people, Amy Watson and Crystal Montero, a core group of folks, of teachers, who. Um, a, a, a core group of folks, of teachers who spent over a year looking for the best curriculum. For the students, the teachers and the families in terms of teaching and learning of mathematics. And so I'm hoping that, uh, Crystal or Amy, your, uh, slides are shared. Because first I'd like to, um, uh, acknowledge the work of the team who spent hours. This process didn't just occur in a month or two months. We began this whole process last year. And tonight is the culmination of all of our work. And, and I'd like to publicly recognize all of the folks who gave their time. We spent time, um, uh, under the direction of Ed Reports. We spent time outside of those meetings. Teachers spent time calling other districts, researching, surveying. Um, to come to this decision and make this recommendation. So I'd like to thank Lori Marchand, principal of White Neck Elementary School. I'd like to take, thank the classroom teachers, Michaela Galogly, Tara Molo and Ca- uh, Ca- Kathy Wright, right? I knew I was going to get that wrong. Kelly Gillis and of course the two co-facilitators, Amy Watson and, um, Krista Montero. So you heard me talk about, next slide please. You heard me talk about this year-long process and oftentimes stakeholders want to know, what did the committee do? How did they decide on, on this particular, um, um, uh, program? So tonight they're going to give you a context for our decision, um, which will include, uh, why we selected the new program. They're going to talk about the priorities and vision that always guided our work. When we were stumped and had questions, we always went back to our priorities and visions. What spoke to the needs of the students, families and, and teachers in the district. Certainly the selection process, because clearly it was not a, a very quick process. There was a lot of difficult conversations, good conversations, a lot of research and a lot of reflection to get us to this point. And so at the end, we have come together as a committee through consensus to make the recommendation of, um. Ready mathematics for K to, K to five, um, mathematics. So I'm going to turn it over to, um, Amy and, and, and Crystal, who will give you some idea of what the process involved.
Thank you, Dr. Bowler. Um, so the elementary math curriculum committee embarked on this journey this entire academic year. Under the facilitation of Ride, who worked heavily in collaboration with Ed Reports. And just a little background information, Ed Reports is an independent nonprofit organization committed to ensuring all students. Um, have access to high-quality instructional materials. They publish service resources of K to twelve instructional materials using an educator-led approach. Uh, that measures standard alignment, usability and other criteria to ensure, uh, high-quality instruction. So with that, we embarked on this journey because we realized through our lack of proficiency on state testing that we have gaps that we need to close. Uh, the research via Ed Reports confirmed our beliefs that we were lacking in rigor that was presented in our current math curriculum. Current curriculum did not promote mathematical discourse to promote, uh, mathematical language in conversations with collaboration amongst our students. Content curriculum does not provide sufficient family component to promote insight and support of their child's math instruction. And finally, in two thousand nineteen, legislator, legislation was passed. That meant all school districts must have a high-quality curriculum material aligned to a rigorous college and career readiness by the year two thousand twenty-three. Ed Reports looks at high-quality curriculum in three gateways, which you will notice here, focus and coherence, rigor, mathematical practices and usability. Our current math curriculum is severely lacking in rigor and mathematical practices. Therefore, they could not even be ranked with gateway three usability. The curriculum committee worked on a vision for the district that was strongly focused on research-based, accessible, equitable, cultural response to practices. That must occur within the classroom. And in the rectangle to the right, you'll notice these six facets that were at the forefront of our priorities, um, for our field test teachers. And our math curriculum committee as we proceeded through this journey of trying to research, explore. And prioritize, uh, our high-quality instructional component moving forward.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to speak a little bit to the actual selection process and how we got here today. Um, so as Dr. Bowler mentioned, it was, um, an extensive process. Uh, we started with that math curriculum committee. Um, and she shared with you the names of that team of eight. Um, the committee worked directly with Ride and Ed Reports, um, to get to where we are today. Uh, we started by surveying educators throughout the district. Uh, that included not only classroom teachers, but administrators, special educators, MLL educators, math curriculum leaders. And again, as Amy mentioned, we determined the district's priorities, uh, which were listed. And once those were established, um, you know, all of our conversations and decisions were based around those priorities. Um, and so that really drove the process. Throughout the whole entire school year, the twenty twenty twenty-one school year, um, we met with Ride and Ed Reports continuously. Uh, there was a total of seven meetings. Those were all-day meetings that the team met, um, with Ride as well as Ed Reports. And they helped guide the process. Uh, we started, uh, our research, taking a look at the data through Ed Reports. We started with seven programs to windle down to three programs. And then eventually settled on two, which were field-tested in classrooms. And throughout that entire process, we were gathering data, um, from the field test teachers. And those teachers were comprised of grades K through five, general education, special education, uh, math curriculum leaders. And MLL teachers, uh, students and families. Um, finally, the committee analyzed and considered all of the data, uh, that included quantitative data as well as qualitative data. Uh, and we determined that Ready Classroom Mathematics was the best choice for our students in these problems. And so I mentioned that, um, we really wanted to hear from students. So here are a few quotes, um, that you see on your screen. Indicating, um, how students felt, um, about the program that was selected. Um, I'll give you a few minutes to take a look at those. And, you know, one of the things we did with students is we surveyed them after they used both programs and there were, um, lots of questions that they answered. But three specific questions that I wanted to share with you was, um, one, which math program were you able to learn best from? And seventy-nine percent of our students chose Ready Classroom over the other choice. The second question was, which math program included fun games and activities that helped you learn and improve your math skills? Sixty-five percent of our students chose Ready Classroom. And which program challenged your thinking and made your math mind grow? And sixty-eight percent of our, uh, students chose Ready Classroom in regards to that question. So once again, bringing it back to our district priorities, um, it was Ready Classroom that we felt aligned best. Um, and these are some of the key components of Ready Classroom. Um, they're certainly not all because it is an in-depth program. But some of the things that stood out, uh, to the committee, um, definitely the learning through problem solving. Uh, we have been, uh, working to increase that, um, in our district so that kids have rigor, as Amy had mentioned. Um, we are also trying to increase, um, student-to-student conversations, which will again increase our mathematical thinking and discourse. Um, as well as the developmenting developmental, um, component. The conceptual understanding and we've done a lot of work around moving away from rote learning. And giving our mathematical learning some depth through conceptual understanding. And Ready Classroom Mathematics has some routines that happen on a regular basis. The try-it, discuss-it and connect-it routines that support that concept. Uh, one of our main things was, uh, connection from school to home, the family component. We felt that our current program did not have a strong family component. Uh, so we were looking for a program that would support our goal of increasing that. We were very drawn to Ready Classroom because it not only had, uh, family letters. But also had the Ready Classroom Mathematics Family Center, uh, which includes lots of resources for our families. There was also the digital components, um, that teachers felt strongly had ease of use for usability. Um, it included the digital bookshelf that was consistent with the hard copy of the workbook that students would be using in the classroom. In the event that we needed to shift, um, toward, uh, remote teaching. Uh, there was, uh, digital math tools as well and the learning games were certainly enjoyable for the students as they applied their math learning. So, I'm gonna, just once again, I think Dr. Bowler had mentioned that this is our recommendation. And I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Bowler, just in case she wanted to add anything else.
Um, so, um, that provides the context for all of the work that the committee did over the course of, beginning last year. And into this year, uh, based on that conversation, you could tell that we really did do an in-depth study of programs. Uh, and looking at the needs of the district, not only just the needs of the students, but the needs of the teachers and the needs of families. So we feel that we have selected the best comprehensive program to meet the needs of the students. And in terms of teaching and learning of mathematics. Uh, so we are hoping that this concludes our work and the conclusion of our work will be, um, approval of, uh, Ready Classroom Mathematics.
Anyone, any questions of the committee? No?
I will say thank you and, you know, it's, um, it's refreshing every time I hear about the process, including our own faculty. Um, and in this case, you know, even students, uh, engaged. So, um, you know, I, I do remember a time when it wasn't. Uh, done in that fashion. So I appreciate that it was done this way and I appreciate everyone that, um, that took the time to, to engage. And, and I appreciate the, the attention to math because, um, yes, it's, you know, we, we can do better, right? We can always do better, but, uh, you know, at the secondary level, uh, you know, we, we've got some room there to move. But it's got to start, uh, with this foundation. So, um, thank you guys for jumping on this.
And just to let you know, next year, Dr. Fran is going to work with the middle school team. Um, to look at the math curriculum for grade six, seven and eight. She had registered by, uh, last Friday and we'll be sending a team, um. Rob Carey was on the ELA, so it'll be Bill Black along with us, the math teachers from both middle schools. So that'll be coming forward for next year as well. Because yes, we have to look at our math scores. It's an area that we're weakened and we hope that this will help. As teachers, uh, acclimate themselves to the new strategies and curriculum.
And I just have a question. Uh, Dr. Bowler, regarding the parent center, is that additional materials that parents can use to, to help their students with homework and stuff? Or is that just a way for them to monitor their progress in, in math?
Um, I'll let Amy or Crystal speak to that, but it's, it, it is a resource in terms of how to help your students. And possibly activities also, but I'll let Amy and Crystal provide you with, um, more description.
So that's a great question. We found that the parent resources in Ready two thousand twenty, um, provide ample support to parents in terms of. Where the student's going with the coherence of the standards, uh, additional strategies that they'll be learning in school that they can then take home. In a relaxed climate and environment to support what's happening in school, but also to enrich, um, what can be done at home through hands-on activities and explorations. So it's, it's a coherent strategy where we take what happens in the classroom and then we can implement it at home to support, reinforce and develop. Which was currently lacking in our current math curriculum.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Crystal, do you want to add to that?
I don't see Crystal, did she, oh, no, I see Crystal. Crystal, she wanted to know if you wanted to add to that?
No, that was, that was, I'm all set. Thank you. That was a perfect answer.
All right, any other questions of the math team? Well, thank you again, ladies, for your hard work and please extend my thank you to the teachers who worked on this and we look forward to seeing it roll out next year. Thanks again for everything.
Thank you very much and I'm looking forward to your advice, your guidance.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is just a notification that we, uh, Mr. Enos and I will be going before the city council on May eighteenth. For the approval of the teacher's contract and the administrative assistance contract. And that's it for my report this evening.
Catherine, what time is that meeting at City Hall?
I believe it starts at seven, but I'll certainly let you know as soon as I see that agenda.
Thank you. Through the chair, can I ask?
Yeah, please.
Um, it's part of the superintendent's report, so I think I'm good. Um, I wanted to ask you when you were talking about, um, the schools and the numbers that we were talking about. With, uh, that Mr. Chonas brought up in our schools currently, um. Are we, uh, you guys had said that the homeschool numbers were, were quite high. Does it look like at this time, or is it too early to discuss this? Are we looking at distance learning being an option for September?
I am not at this time, no. I'm hoping all in-person will be in effect for September.
So it's okay to.
Same circumstances.
Right, so if we're, if we continue in this trend that we're going into, a- as of this week, vaccinations were, were talked about for middle school and up. Um, if, if people chose to stay home next year, we would look in that would be a homeschool request coming to us as of right now.
Correct, correct, just as normal. Um, the vaccinations, we brought them up. We did have high school vaccinations. We had them a week ago Saturday and then again on Friday at the Shores Market across the street. Um, Captain Potvin from the fire department, uh, scheduled it for us. We sent out notification, um, Mr. Gibbons to the high school. Students who were sixteen and above, if they wanted to have a vaccination. Today at our IASA meeting, uh, they announced that next Monday, they're going to start vaccinations from twelve to fifteen students. So I contacted Tony Fioler and he's contacting the captain again to see if they will set up clinics for twelve to, um. Fifteen-year-olds at Shores as well. Um, so if they want to and with their parents, uh, they can go and have their vaccinations.
Superintendent, are you jumping the agenda?
No, I'm just answering because Jessica mentioned vaccinations. I'm sorry.
Jessica, I do have those homeschool numbers. Um, Mary Ann sent them to me. We had, uh, one hundred and fourteen new homeschool students this year. Typically, we have twelve in a year, but some of those students have already returned back to school.
And, uh, either Dr. Fran or Superintendent Crowley, I believe as far as September goes, the, um. Uh, Department of Ed would have to approve of any distance learning that would start in September, right? Because right now it's just approved through the completion of this school year. And it would need another approval from Ride in order to offer that as an option. Is that a correct statement?
Yes and no. Um, to have it, um, to the extent that schools are having it now, yes, Ride would have to, uh, say, you know, intervene. Um, to say that in a special program such as, um, our anxiety program, that we may not use that. On occasion, we might. on occasion, we might, but otherwise, no, no, right. You're absolutely right.
Unless it's, unless it's either, you know, I know that there's talk of whether it's snow days or what have you, but for general purposes, I'm
Even in snow days, they have to approve it, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I have another question related to enrollment in the high school, but I think maybe I should add up to the agenda because it's not, for the next time, just because it's not related to COVID.
No, you can ask it, Jenny.
Well, I just wanted to know if we are looking to review the process of confirming new enrollments at the high school to just confirm that students that are attending our, our new high school are in fact residents of East Providence. I'm not sure what the current process is, or if we're looking into improving that process in place.
I'm going to let Diana Clark answer that for you. She's been working on it already. Diana?
As far as the, we do residency checks on a regular basis, whether it be through the administration of the building, having questions, or just things that may come up during the course of the year. So we are on that for the students that are already enrolled. If they're new students coming in, what will happen is we make sure that they have the proof of residencies that we require. And if there's a question, I don't believe that we're allowed to restrict them from coming in, but what we can do is we can send a community officer out there to do the actual residency check, and then we'll make a decision at that point in time. If they don't belong here, which we had a couple of families just recently come up that haven't been living here for the whole year, and I told them, "Time to go." So, but for the most part, this year, we had like 21 families across the district that had to leave due to the fact that they weren't residents of the city. And we will be paying closer attention to the high school.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Chonis, in regards to the question that you had regarding enrollment, from last year to this year, we did see a 4% decrease. However, from the year before, which would have been 1819, it was only 1.8%.
Thank you.
And that's the end of my report this evening.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or concerns before we move on? Comments? Next item, please. Next item is the Director of Human Resources report by Cheryl Maloney.
Good evening. This evening, we have two retirements. The first is Donna Del Femeny, Administrative Assistant in Maintenance. It will be effective August 21st of 2021. And the second is Rhonda Mancino, Administrative Assistant for Riverside, effective 10/9/2021. I have a few words. Donna Del Femeny has worked for the East Providence School District for over 18 years. Donna was hired January 15th, 2003, as a secretary in the attendance office of the East Providence High School. Donna has since worked in multiple secretarial positions at Riverside Middle School, Oldham Elementary, and Hennessy. In March of 2015, Donna took the position of secretary in the maintenance office. This is the position she will be retiring from in August of this year. Rhonda Mancino has worked for the East Providence School District for over 30 years. Rhonda was hired September 4th, 1990, as a secretary in the library at Martin Middle School. In August of 2000, she became the Assistant Principal's Secretary at Martin Middle School. In October of 2000, she transferred to the administration offices, and over the years, worked in the attendance office, pupil personnel office, and for many years in the transportation office. And most recently, came to Riverside Middle School in July of 2020 as the Assistant Principal's Secretary. I would like to wish both ladies a healthy and happy retirement.
Thank you for their service.
Okay, next, Cheryl.
I need a motion for the retirements.
Do we have a motion to accept the retirement? Are we going to let these?
People stay.
My ladies. We have a motion by Mr. Chonis to accept the retirement.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Bo Shane. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. They are allowed to retire.
Thank you. We have one leave of absence this evening. The committee has been presented with the name. It's a paraprofessional at Oldham. It will go from June 4th to the end of the school year.
We have a motion to approve. Motion by Ms. Asanero, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Bo Shane. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. We have no non-renewals and no recalls this evening. We have some layoffs, and the committee has been presented with the names, and I will just read the positions. We have a Grade One at Waddington, Grade One at Francis, Grade Point at East Providence High School, a Grade Five at Waddington, and a Physical Education Teacher at East Providence High School. And then I have seven paraprofessionals in the district that will also be laid off. And that was also presented to the committee.
I will add that I did speak with superintendent, and without guarantee, there is at this time expectation that they will all be recalled, and we'll keep our fingers crossed for those folks. But just for the committee's information. So do we have a motion?
Mr. Montero, I'm going to, I just want to tell you about the paraprofessionals. The layoffs, we have a lot of displacements because we had students leaving the high school, so the powers became available. We know that we're going to need the powers on the elementary level because those powers have to be building-based powers, and they have to cover for recess, and they have to cover for the lunches right after the job placement. When the principals know just who their specialists are, I'm going to sit down with them, we do their schedule, then they're going to be asking for a certain number of paraprose for each school so that they can implement their schedule. So I would anticipate that they would all be returning without a guarantee, but
We also had a number of paraprofessionals that were hired after the job placement event last year because we had laid off a number, quite a number last year. And so because it was after the job placement event, they needed to, some of these needed to displace, and this is how it came out into the layoffs.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Brandl, do we have a second?
Did she say like 100% or 95% Mr. Montero? Like 98.8%?
Yeah, that's what I would have gauged it, you know. Just, you know, again, just shy of a guarantee.
Okay. Well, I'm a betting woman, so I'm going to take that and hope that we are sitting here at another time to make sure that we got some fine people on this list again. I know we legally have to do it, but I'm legally obligated to say that. I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The last item, I have district job eliminations. This committee has been submitted the names. We have three positions. Director of Instructional Technology and Data, an Assistant Principal, and a Principal.
And it is my understanding that all three were offered jobs within the district as well, alternative jobs within the district as well.
Yes.
The, the folks filling those, those positions that no longer exist, or would no longer exist. Questions, comments, or will entertain a motion?
There are very many good things that we do in this district. I'm proud to be associated with the East Providence School District. However, we're not perfect, and I, I think there are some areas where we need to improve. And we are in the people business, and if we are successful, it's because of the people in this district. And that's my statement. Thank you.
Any comments? Well, I will say that you know, filling, filling this role is, you know, we, we can, we can do it for the easy stuff, but we can do it for the hard stuff. You know, we can do it for both. And you know, like I said, I I saw what happened when folks before us failed to do the, the hard stuff. And it ended up hurting our kids. So while I agree that, you know, I, I, well, I don't want to say that I, I agree. I mean, we're, we're people. We appreciate our people. We have a job to do on behalf of our students and the children in this district. And, you know, when I came in in 2012, we were marching around City Hall because this, the existing school committee couldn't find funds to pay for middle school sports. And that was largely in part, that was just a fraction of, 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 you know, the, the situation of the district. And that was, you know, because we make personal decisions and not proper decisions and difficult decisions. So that is my case on this. You know, I know that, that, I'll, I'll say flat out that the people here that are, that are impacted by these, by this suggestion are people that I respect greatly. So I was very pleased to hear that they were being offered an additional job in the district, which is not normal, at least not in my experience. You know, and we've seen several administrators in this district be non-renewed, reorganized, or what have you. And this is not the case of non-renewal. It's a job elimination. Some of it is union, so I guess the question is, if we don't make a move on at least one of these positions, then we've got a union issue to address. And the others, we've got duplicate function and potentially on the other two, so. I guess the question is, what, what are we here to do? You know, we have a responsibility, but who is it to? And we're, we're entitled to prioritize as we wish. And you know, I would just like to see that, that we put our priorities in order, take care of people as best we can, take care of students first. What's that? We need a motion of some sort.
Through the chair.
Yes, please.
These are elimination of positions. These are not elimination of people. We've been here before. I've been here before. I wear my heart on my sleeve. Everyone knows that. That might be the worst quality of me sitting up here. Sometimes it's the best quality. On a night like tonight, it's the worst. Um. So I will make the motion.
That is a motion to accept the elimination of the three jobs. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Ms. Asanero. Motion by Ms. Bo Shane, second by Ms. Asanero. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. And again, I will, I will echo what Ms. Bo Shane has said. You know, in, in, in my, in my, my professional career, I've seen seen it, you know, restructuring, reorganization happen around me. You know, I, I go to work every day myself, knowing that I could wake up tomorrow and find out that my job is, is no more, so. You know, it's, it's not, it's not an easy thing to do, but again, we have an obligation to protect the, the direction of the district for the students. And I appreciate that the administration has made accommodations for these folks, so. And I appreciate the, the efforts of the school committee to do its, its job here. And we will continue to monitor this situation and the decisions on this as we continue to restructure the district. Next item, please.
Next item is the Director of Finance Support by Craig Enos.
Good evening, everyone. So again, like last month, my report is going to be very, very brief and to the point. We do remain on target and on budget for all our areas. Just a couple of items that I just did want to point out to you. So you did approve the awarding of the removal of the paint booth at the meeting last month, and so that, that did take place. We're very grateful for that. And so that expensed the $11,380. You can see that on the bottom of page one in the 54,000 series, line 54311. And that's what will, you'll be approving later to award to AA rec. And then just for a point of information on page two, for the special education tuitions, the out-of for the special education tuitions, the out of districts. Those are in the 55,000 series. That would be 55, 630, 640, and 650. We remain in good shape, knocking on wood with those lines. So we, those funds that are shown in that line item are the encumbrances for the purchase orders for the school year. So we are fortunate and we are remaining in good, good shape with those lines. We still have some, some funds left in those lines. But we are not overrun in that area, which historically for us has been a challenge. So thank you to the Special Education Department, to Leslie and Bud for all their hard work. And that's all I have.
Craig, just if I may.
Sure.
That's, you said 630, 40, and 50?
Correct, yep.
So we're showing that we're.
So we have, so in, as an example, in 55, 630, so for the private special education schools, we budgeted $4,089,800. And for purchase orders for all of the encumbrances that we have, we have allotted $3,951,511. So that leaves us a balance in that account for the rest of the year of $138,289.
That's what I wanted to clarify is that we, we will not be, don't anticipate, there wouldn't be a reason for us to be billed in this fiscal year against that line.
Correct. The only, the only thing that will happen is if a student either moves into the city that has an IEP that already has a out of, out of district placement, then we would take it from that line item. Or if there is a student that the evaluation teams determine that the student needs to be serviced out of the district, then we would take it, then, then that remaining balance in those account line items would drop.
In those situations, like the first one that you mentioned, if a student moved into the district.
Yep.
If, if they are moving in from another Rhode Island district, is there transfer of, in other words, you know, that would be assuming that the prior district had been billed for the services.
Correct.
Now they become an East Providence student, does that facility just hold the funds and, you know, just complete the services? Or do they credit the first district and then, you know, how does that work?
Yeah, so the billing for all of the schools are done each month. So what would happen is, as soon as we had the student move within, say if they moved in partway during the month of May. So in the beginning of June, we would just get a bill for those days that the student had officially enrolled in East Providence. And we would, we would take ownership for the bill as of that day.
So it's monthly?
Correct, correct. And then, and then what, what we do, what, what Mike Hubert will do with Ruth Reynolds in the Special Ed Office, shortly they'll be going over the list and to see if there are any students who have maybe moved out. So if there's any purchase orders that we can close. So we always do a review of that.
Craig, I thought you were going to go over the line items that we were going to move out of the budget.
Um, so, so I wanted to do that for next month because we, we we will have the official notification of the SRT2 funds. We're doing a, the school superintendents and the school business managers are having a meeting with the fiscal office at the Department of Ed on Thursday. So we are at this point, from what we've been told, at 5.2 million for the SRT2 funds. And so at the next month's meeting, because we, that, once the application is released and we know what the exact dollar amount is, we're going to be going into the budget that we have. And so in June, we're going to be providing a revised budget that will not affect the bottom line. The, the budgeted amount of $88,222,270 will remain the same. However, we're going to be moving some of the line items into the SRT2 fund grant. And so this way, we can move some of those funds up into the salary and benefit line items to cover all of the salary increases as a result of the contract negotiations. So I'll be presenting that to you for next month.
Craig, in the 5300s for OT where we budgeted 20,000. That seems real, like, you know, considering now we're 74%. I know the entire category were in good shape.
Yep. And so I'm, I'm thinking that that may be the fact that we may have had an OT who was out. And so we had to contract out for that service because those hours were not able to be covered by the staff that we have.
Okay.
But I can check on that.
Yeah, we, you know, between OT and speech.
Yep.
Will you, you know, significant overage on those items? Any other questions or comment for Craig regarding finance support? Next item, please.
The next item is the Policy Committee Report by Jessica O'Shane.
All right, actually, we will, if I can get a motion to table that item, O'Shane just had to step out.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Brand.
Jessica, if you're going to table the item, is Jessica still?
No, no, she stepped out.
Okay.
So, so that table, and definitely I'm hoping to just revisit it when she comes back in the room. Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Brandl. Who have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You're both. All right. So again, yeah, I'm anticipating when she steps back in, we will, we'll revisit that. That puts me up next for the building project report. I'm going to try with this Chromebook that I'm not used to doing to share my screen. Think I did it. All right. So again, we had our building committee meeting last night. And I'm just going to do the, kind of do an overview. We have, our AHA is going to be meeting with the building project folks to talk about the traffic and, you know, the roads and emergency grass and so forth. Commissioning agent on the building envelope, mechanical, electrical, plumbing. That was, we had one visit in April, on April 21st to look at those components. FFNE, so the RFP went out. It was awarded and we're expecting installation of furniture to begin July, mid to late July into August for the FFNE components. Again, we're about 66.8% complete on the construction. Everything's ongoing, finishing, finishes, millwork, rooftop, you know, the start of the rooftop unit, kitchen equipment going in, exterior greenhouses anticipated in May-June timeframe, gym flooring, May-June timeframe. They'll also start the punch list because we do have portions of the building that are significantly completed, so we can start looking at that. Commissioning start will be in June, which we've spoken about a little bit, Charlie. Auditorium seating installation in June. We had initially said May, but we put that off because they're still doing some of the ceiling work and so forth. So we figured, or they figured not to bring in the seating just yet. So in June. And again, I said furniture going in July, August. We're doing really well. I don't know if you remember, but when we looked at MWBE participation, the goal was 10%, which is a very lofty goal for construction. And we are right around that 13% number. We're significantly into this project. So we think we're going to finish, actually probably overachieving where we thought we would be, quite honestly, going into it. Again, this, I'm going to go by this chart. This really goes through all of the different trades and they're all going. Some of the images here, okay, so the west elevation, which is the front of the building, is taking shape. There's walls coming up in front of the main entrance, it's curving coming up. Here's a view of the east elevation, the back of the building from the visitors' side of the football field with the new turf. Your south and north elevations. And you can see on the south elevation, you can see some of that curbing and sidewalk going in. Here's a nice image of the field. It's got the large interlocking EP logo. Very excited about the track and being able to host field events, which, again, discus, hammer throw, shot put area, things that we absolutely haven't had. Your home bleachers with the nice press box end zone photo. There's that interlocking EP. That's a 50-yard line. And in stormwater management, that's, there's several stormwater management locations throughout the site in and around the parking areas. The parking lot, this is, it's hard to see, but it's CTC building is kind of sitting back here. And this would be looking from the new building across the lot. So that parking lot coming into shape. Typical classroom is coming in. You see the flooring. Case work along the outside window. It was just a library and media center. Again, so you've got these bump outs for collaboration spaces. Stair rails are going into the staircases. Images of the library and media center. This is a maker space. This is when you're looking at the front of the building, that large center glass bump out is in this space here. Science classrooms. This picture, and I like this one here, the, to the left. I just, I can't say enough about going from one science lab to 11. I'll say it every day. You know, the storage space that we have for the science programs. The aquatics that are in other rooms. Just, the program's just going to take off. I'm very excited to see that. This view here is if you're standing on the, on the third floor looking, I'm sorry, that would be fourth floor, looking up. You see the lights, these are the roof windows letting in the sunlight. This would be your third floor. Look up through the fourth floor to the ceiling, and that's natural light coming through there. Eight mile walking track. A good shot of the gymnasium. The ceiling is painted, at least a coat of paint on there. So prior to this, probably saw just the board with just tape and mud. Main entrance, again, lots of natural light. Auditorium, the scaffolding is down, so you can get a good view of some of the acoustical ceiling panels as well as, hard to see on this, but some of the wall structures. Budget wise, we are still in very good shape with 76% of, 74%, I should say, of our owner contingency, 80% of our construction contingency, and 77% of our owner allowance. And COVID, we've actually been, they're doing a great job on the site of staying healthy and really not impacting the job. And I will send this to you guys, but again, this just kind of details the budget, just some of the numbers that have moved with some of the any, any recent changes. We've done some, there's some signs that are going up on the outside, some posts that we changed as well as some mechanical, electrical that was added into the, to the building. And the last thing, so bear with me as I do this. Messed this up. All right, I wanted to pull up the image, but I'm going to mess it up. We did approve a clock tower at last night's building committee meeting. Let me see if I can. Yeah, here we go. All right, bear with me, folks. That's right, I have it. All right, here we go. Am I still sharing or no? All right. So thanks for bearing with me on that one. So the building committee did receive the final renderings of the clock tower. So I'll show you a few different images here. So you'll notice this was a standard piece that we saw when AI3 came before us last month. Very much resembles the existing clock tower. We want to keep that tradition. So we looked at the signage and the lighting. What we are going with here is on this backside here with the interlocking EP, this is facing the school. And because it's the only signage on that third side of the clock tower, we went with a lit red lettering, so it won't be white like this T here. But it is also backlit with that halo lighting. So it'll stand out, and I'll show you on the images there. The clock face stained with the analog, traditional black ticks, but they will be illuminated like you see here to the right. So the black during the day will stand out against the the finish behind it very well. And what we don't have today, but this one we'll have, is the illuminated ticks and minute and hour mark. And then the East Providence High School is a raised red, tawny red metal lettering. Behind it is a halo backlit lighting. So here's some renderings. If you can see that, if you're in the evening on Bucutet Avenue, if you are heading south, that's how the clock tower would look there. If you are entering the site, you'll see this image on the left, you can see the letters are backlit, really kind of helping the East Providence High School stand out. The clock will be visible. And then on the right, there's that image of the interlocking EP. As you are exiting the campus, you'll see that. So, you know, everyone, building committee was very pleased, again, with AI3 did a great job of staying traditional in the design, but listening to the needs of how we wanted to enhance what we have. With that, is there any questions, comments?
I was just curious if, did Gilbane provide any like cost estimate yet as to what the construction of the new clock tower would cost or what it would cost to tear down the old one?
No, so the, that will come next. Now that we approved the design last night at the building committee, AI3 will now send those final designs because that will also include the electrical requirements and so forth. And then Gilbane will get the estimates from the contractors, and it'll come back. And then Gil Bain will get the estimates from the contractors, and then they'll come back with the figure for that.
Mr. Montero, you, you usually do, but you said you, you'll email us this?
Yes.
You have this, the presentation we just saw?
Yes.
And the second question is, I, I would assume, I don't want to assume, but that the, the demolition of the school is more important than the demolition of the clock tower. I'm asking which will be demolished first, you know?
So I, I don't know. Again, the first stage would be the asbestos abatement in the building. But now that we've, you know, officially are moving in the direction of a new clock tower, now Gil Bain will have to kind of schedule that out, and, and I don't know how they're going to manage.
I would think it's a priority, but, you know, it's Gil Bain, you're the pro.
Maybe, maybe not though, right? Because it, it could depend on, again, I'm not in, in the, in the field, but, you know, perhaps it, it'll be easier to maneuver the site, to demo the building without the clock tower in the way, I don't know. So I definitely don't want to make any assumption of that. Any other questions, comments? And so what we're doing, well, you heard the walkthrough on Memorial Day weekend of the existing high school. And we are also, Principal Givens is working with our project manager to get our staff now touring the building, because, because of the quick change from completion to getting the building going, we want to get familiarity with our staff in the building. So they're now being scheduled to go through at, at least once, and for some, it'll be more than once, as things go, because we do want them to be acclimated and be a resource to the students when the students arrive. So those conversations continue to go on. And that is all I have on that. And if it pleases the committee, we can go back to Ms. Boe Shane with the policy committee report.
Thank you, and thank you, Chair, for covering. I had a family member that had surgery today, and I was just getting an update of the good news, so thank you. Um, so as I sit here, we, we took a lot of the building policy, and we just eliminated a lot of it. And made it very, very simple. A lot's going to change over the next couple of years. And what we were doing, I think, was more procedural than actually a policy. So I think that's where a lot of confusion was happening. And we were so set on who's, what's, and when's, instead of just the policy and the actual policy that we oversee as a school committee, not the ins and outs. We already have, in my opinion, and I hope the opinion of, of all five of us sitting here, the experts that we have hired to, to find out the information, making sure that we have fire code and the right amount of money we're paying for a field. I mean, we've got the best of the best in those positions that can make sure that we're doing that stuff. And that will all be part of the packet when people come and get, I'm sorry, I kind of want to look at you guys because you're right here, but I'm looking at this because I'm trying to talk to you guys. Um, so this is what we came down to. And it pretty much states, which was the most important part of mine, that says, "It is the school committee's desire that the use of the school property be enjoyed by East Providence residents." That's come up in our, our meetings numerous times about how this, not only the high school, but all schools are part of our, our community, and that they should be used especially by our students. So I'm assuming you guys have all read this. There was a little bit of a law issue that got corrected by our, my co-school committee member right here. So other than that, opinions?
I just want to add to that. Regarding the last one that anyone else had read, I'm sure everyone noticed how it was kind of a mix of, you know, steps on how to get rental, a contract slash qualifications and categories. So it was doing too much, and it was clearly very confusing and was, was not helpful at all. If anything, I think it brought a lot of liability in the event that a rental didn't turn out too well. So I am happy to, you know, to see that we have moved away from the, the old one and relieved.
And, you know, I, I agree, and I want to thank, you know, thank you guys for, for, you know, this is how it's supposed to work, right? It's like, we look at something and, you know, we give it a good look, and we give feedback. And then, you know, you guys like put in the time to say, you know what? Yeah, let's, let's really revisit this. And, I mean, this is a major overhaul to what we've had for, you know, probably over a decade, right? So, you know, I, I think, I think it's a, it's a very clear.
So can I just give credit, credit where credit is due? So Diana, can you stand up wherever you are? Diana and I literally get on with Cheryl. So the meeting had just started, and Catherine and Jenny were like three minutes late, but the meeting had just started. And within three minutes, Diana, I had this idea, Diana had this idea, and we just kind of banged it off of each other. And then Cheryl added, and then Jenny got on and was like, yep. So it was, um, it was a group effort that we all were like, the other stuff is just not necessary. That's all procedural, and that really has nothing to do with us. It really doesn't.
Especially the, the contract.
Yeah.
Reference itself as a contract. I was like, that's not our job.
No. So ultimately, what we want the most and what, what, we, we did copy a little bit off of another school's, which we looked at for the new high school. So we did change a little bit of, of the applicants, but it's not changing. It's what's already happening. To be in a category one, you need to be pretty much a student in East Providence or are related to an East, you know, you have to be an East Providence Radisson, which pretty much makes up of everybody right now. Student councils, athletic teams, special advisory committee, PTO, PTA, school department functions. And then the second category is pretty much the same thing that's already being used. And we, what we did is instead of leaving the names, we gave examples of it. So people can look at it and be like, oh, that's where we are, you know, Little Leagues, lacrosse, soccer leagues, basketball associations. I think it's a lot easier. And what turned out to be like a 12 pages is, is now a front and a back.
Oh, that's, that's great.
Do the chair.
Yes, please.
I just want to say, in my opinion, the best sentence in this policy is that the school committee and/or the superintendent reserves the right to make changes and/or additions to these rules and regulations if deemed appropriate for the safe use of the school building, school grounds, which will be approved by the school committee as stated in the bylaws. That leaves it up to the school committee and the superintendent, whoever they are, to set some rules at that time. So I think that's the best sentence of the, in the policy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm glad that you guys are all happy, because this, this was not easy. I mean, we met a lot last summer, and I apologize for all of the people that met. And then, but we got through that, a lot of procedural stuff came out. And once again, Diana, thank you extremely much for coming to that meeting and, and immediately giving your input and your knowledge and your expertise. I, I greatly appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And Cheryl, I'm sorry I wasted your time for many, many, many meetings. Many.
All right. Thank you. Next item, please.
I did have a question for Ms. Boe Shane and the very busy policy committee. Do we need, I'm sorry, I can, I can bear. Yeah, well, vaccinations, I mean, are, does our policy on vaccinations cover, do you think, cover all of the possibility that we're going forward with? Or do we need to look at our vaccination policy again?
We can look at it, but I'm, we were going to bring a vaccination policy up when, yeah, and then we said no. But we can look at it again. I don't know how until, I guess, until it becomes state mandated. Right now, it's state mandated for.
From constituents and parents about going forward with, with vaccinations. And as Mr. Montero brought up, if we're all in person in September.
So right now, it's, it's not mandatory for any, any school, a person to be vaccinated. It's a choice. I do believe we have a pretty high number, though, in East Providence, which if it's above 70%, that's what the government keeps telling us, it's hard immunity. But going forward, I think the Rhode Island Department of Health would be the people that would make that a mandatory, just like they make the chickenpox. The flu vaccine is not mandatory to come to school. I know Massachusetts did do that for some schools. I don't know if it's all of Massachusetts or some of Massachusetts. But I know the chickenpox, measles, mumps, and rubella, I think, and I, tuberculosis, I, I believed was as well. But I, I, I know we've had a case in East Providence. I was, I can't say anymore on that, but I know it was a case. So I do believe, but once again, they do have religious exemption. We're not like Connecticut where they are trying to make that. I believe Connecticut's trying to get rid of the religious exemption for vaccines. So I don't know if our state is doing that, but I think until we get any kind of word on from RIDE or Rhode Island Department of Health, I would probably stay far away from that.
Well, I mean, we're going to have to face it, though.
Yeah.
It's, the, the fact of the matter is, I get people on the, let's say, conservative side that say, "We cannot mandate this or that." But then, to be totally safe, you know, you want some vaccinations taking place. So I do think that, that some guidance is necessary, and we at least need to be talking about it. And the superintendent has a handle on it.
Well, you know, I, I think that specifically with regards to COVID, you know, until, until the vaccines are given full acceptance by the FDA, you know, as opposed to an emergency certification or approval, you know, then, then it can't be mandated. And if that doesn't change, what I anticipate, this is just me thinking out loud, what I anticipate is a situation where RIDE may say, hey, listen, we can't mandate it. However, it's been made available, and if you've made your choice to not take the vaccine, that is your choice. But school is open, and you'll attend school. And we're not going to allow you to, you know, go virtual because you don't have a vaccine that you opted out of, is how I, what I envisioned. But, you know, I was listening to a report today, they're saying, you know, right now that, they said, you know, are they going to require the, the military to, to get the vaccine? Because there are several members of the military that, you know, are refusing it. And again, the discussion came up to say, well, you know, it's still not a fully approved vaccine.
Montero, when you're in the military, you're government property.
I, I understand. Right, but. Right, but there.
When you couldn't get tattoos in the military, because the Army regs it, you can't get a tattoo.
Right, so, but, but that's my point, right? So when you, when you speak to that, and the, and the government has not yet mandated it because it's not fully approved, they're not ready to, to mandate it for their, for their enlisted until it's fully approved. So, you know, that, you kind of, like, if we haven't crossed that threshold yet.
But I'm saying, we, we have to be ready for.
Yes.
And I'm sure the superintendent's ready, but, but really, we, we have to be ready for what's coming. And, and I get some people that say, "You better not be mandating my kids to get vaccinated."
Oh, you're definitely going to say that, and then you've got me telling Tony that my daughter's 12. So I think at this point, we just follow the guidelines, and whatever the guidelines say, we follow them, and if, we take it from there. You're muted.
I'll pull up the old policy tomorrow, and I'll send it out to you, so you can look at what policy you have presently. Right now, RIDE is leaving it up to districts to determine what, or if any policies they want to have. It's using the testing of the athletes or testing before prom. RIDE is just kind of saying, you know, districts do or follow whatever policies you have. At this point, Mr. Chonis, but I'm going to get an additional write-up from Nurse Wallace as to what the recommendations are to, from RIDE, okay?
Thank you.
Send it out.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next item, please.
Next item is discussion items, starting with the importance of vision for success in public schools by Mr. Chonis.
Ms. Chonis, would you like to have more discussion on that?
I just want to, I'll keep it brief.
Oh, please, don't, whatever you need.
No, we, we did cover, because I think it's so vitally important to a child's education that, that their vision is what it should be. Again, what value was a test if the child can't see? And I was very glad to hear the superintendent say that the district is investing in some, some equipment. And I will just reiterate, it, as in a lot of fields, there are shortages. And there are shortages with opticians, there are shortages with optometrist assistance. There are shortages in those fields, and that, that may be a great opportunity at our CTC. But that's, unless anyone has any other comments, that's, that's really what I wanted to say. I just think it's, it's vitally important to our community, any community. Thank you.
And again, on the next item for vaccinations, are we, we covered?
Yeah, I just, again, I think it's something we're going to have to face. And, and I know the CDC and Rhode Island Department of Health are going to have their say. But I'm sure we want to look at it ourselves, at, primarily superintendent and the administration, because, you know, we want our, our folks to be safe, and we want to make sure what we're doing is totally legal, right? I'm not a lawyer, but whatever we do, it's got to be legal.
Right. Okay. And the next item, I'm going to look to Mr. Fiola. So there were, there were requests by Ms. Azanaro and Mr. Brandl separately to me for this agenda with regards to maintenance in the district. Mr. Brandl would, wanted to get an update on any plans for this building here at Martin Middle School, I believe, was the request. And then Ms. Azanaro's question was more broad-based on the district with regard to the five-year plan, you know, which was also something that we had to submit as part of stage one and two.
Yes.
For the high school project, just kind of, you know, some, some community questions or concerns about, wanting to know what's going on at this building, and then also just from a district funding concern, I think, right from speaking to Ms. Azanaro's question, it was more with regards to, you know, are we prepared? Are we protected funding-wise? You know, so.
So I can address a, a little bit of both. First of all, we still have our five- and 10-year plan, which is in with the Department of Ed. We are required to maintain our buildings, and now with the addition of the new high school, we are required to spend X amount of dollars in every budget on our buildings. So currently, we are already looking at windows, we're looking at windows at Riverside. We're looking at windows. We're looking at windows in elementary schools. We're looking at entryways in elementary schools. We're looking at roofs, and we're looking at air conditioners and air filtration systems and new unit vents. Those are all on our radar for the next couple of years. So we're working on all of that as part of the money that we have to put aside, plus the ESSR money that's available for air filtration. So we're looking at that. So we're looking at that, on how we can replace the windows and use that funding, which will enable us to get more fresh air into buildings. We have down at RIDE right now, entryways at a couple of our schools. You know, we did the one at Riverside Middle School, we have the one at White Neck. We have Silver Spring and Hennessy down at RIDE being examined right now. We have our architects working on drawing window projects. We're looking at three of them right now. We're examining our roofs. Our fire suppression systems are all done throughout the district. We have updated all of our fire alarms throughout the district. Martin, I would defer to the superintendent. That's a very big project. That's something that has to be looked at in the future, but that's not right now. Right now, we've got to get the high school done, and while we're doing that, we're gonna continue working on our other schools. We've got some asphalt work to do in the next couple of years in some of our schools, including here at Martin. Is there anything I could address that? I think the superintendent is saying something, but she's muted, Ken.
All right. Mark, we have filtration system in this year, Max. And all those windows that you're looking at there around the cafeteria and going up the hallway are all new here at Martin. We replaced that. We did over the library area as well in Martin. As, we did some asphalt work also outside at Martin. But right now, Martin is just on hold for any major construction. We have a five-year plan that Mr. Fiola mentioned, and that plan has windows in it. For some of our elementary schools, those windows are very old. We're gonna be looking at, as he said, at Orlo and White Neck. And Tony, tell them about Riverside. Now, we had Riverside's windows in. We are ready to go. You know, we chose our window, the architect, the whole thing. We go back, and Rye, go ahead, Tony, tell them. I cannot even believe this.
Yeah, the windows picked out, we were ready to roll, and we were notified by the building people at RIDE that we are less distance from the water, and so we fall in the hurricane zone. So now all the windows have to be hurricane-rated windows. So now we are back to the drawing board, and we have to reevaluate all the windows at Riverside Middle School because we are too close to the water.
Which will be an additional million.
It has to do with school buildings and businesses not residential. I asked that question. So the question that Ms. Bochane had asked was, the houses have to have it, and they don't have the same criteria as school buildings. We are examining on Monday. We have architects and engineers that will be down at Riverside to assist us in looking at ways of attaching a curtain wall up to the steel beams from that lodge plates of glass. So that's gonna happen on Monday, so we're still working on it, but we had a setback, and the setback was that we have to have hurricane-force windows there. The superintendent brought up here at Martin, you have a brand-new elevator inside here. You have an expanded fire alarm system inside here. We've done asphalt work outside, all the windows down here, new doors were replaced. We put that air filtration unit upstairs on the roof in all of the things, and it's been working very well. Mr. Chonas had a question.
My question, Tony, for you, and I know you're working on it. How are we doing moving from the old high school to the new? I know there are things at the old high school that have to make the trip.
So, sir, we're actually doing very well. All of our bookrooms and closets are now all empty. The only thing we have in one that remains is the files to move over. We have made lists of items that are going out to the principals. Some of the middle schools and elementaries came up to look at some stuff that we had up there to see if they could use it in their buildings. That list is all prepared to start moving on the twenty-third. We're gonna be moving some of the other stuff early if we can. We've already started taking down, the Hall of Fame is down, the trophies have been wrapped. So we're ready to go. Teachers have done a wonderful job packing. If you go up there right now, and if you walk through on the twenty-ninth, you're gonna see boxes and boxes packed in class. And what they've done is they've taken items that were on the shelves, books that they used in the beginning of the school year. Say, the English department read a particular book in their class in September, that's already packed. We're not waiting till the end. We're ready to go. We have a list of everything that's moving to what we refer to as storage, storage being the CTC building. We have a move manager. Everything's been photographed. We've reviewed it with Dr. Faran and a team of people to see that it is going or it's not going either into storage or moving on, like instruments that are going over to the new building will all go in storage. So we're actually really ahead of schedule.
Do you, you don't have to tell me what it is, okay? But do you have a target date as to when you feel that building in your mind? Do you know what your target date is to have that building clear?
I have a date from Gilbane. I'm told seven days from when we close. We might be able to buy a day or two, but that's it. So we have to be out of that building in that first couple of days, by the first couple of days of July. The earlier the better. They're gonna start setting up fencing immediately on the twenty-fourth. We close school on the twenty-third. We're prepared to start immediately. A couple of days later, the moving company will come in and start moving all the items to the CTC. We will then also go in with a team of people to remove items that we have to take. Fire extinguishers, the American flags, the camera systems coming down. So we'll be using those days to take all of that stuff out before demo, and then we're hoping within that seven days to hand the keys over. And at that point, once we do, none of us are allowed back in that building.
Okay, you, I know you will handle it, but don't be afraid to call for help if you need help or additional people.
We're all set. We have a team of people ready to go. Our maintenance staff is ready to go. As you see on that paper that I gave you earlier, the custodial team that's up there will be assisting us, and we're gonna be starting to work on it as soon as that walkthrough on the twenty-ninth. On June third, we're gonna start taking all the plaques down off the wall, the names of Arthur Almazian and Isabel Remus, those are all gonna start coming down and getting them wrapped. All the banners are gonna come down in the gym during that timeframe to give us a head start.
Thank you.
Brother Chair, just one second. Tony, you mentioned Sandy. Is she, what is her?
So it is part of the move team, myself, Sandy, Diana Clarkin, Craig, Chris Murphy. So she's coordinated with the, getting the principals down. She's coordinated the move.
I didn't know there was a move team. Thank you.
Yeah, we have a whole team.
Move team. Thank you, Sandy. Thank you, everybody.
I asked Sandy if she would take that on, you know, with Tony, and she obliged, yes. And then Diana Clarkin, too. It was incredible, really, working together, all that whole team, Tony, too. Thank you so much.
So the, I guess I'll look to Max and Jenny as far as your topics and questions that you might have. I don't know, Tony covered what you were looking for. I know.
We'll do that. We'll turn it next time. I'm sorry.
I was wondering if I could, like, make a request to actually get, like, the maintenance plans for both Martin and Riverside? Okay. And not to switch subjects, but is there a way I could ask about the maintenance plan for the new high school? Or would that have to be, like, a different time?
I can, I can speak to that. First, I'll defer to Jenny since she waited for you, and then I'll answer that question.
That would actually be my, that was gonna be my question, yeah.
So.
Just a kind of basic understanding on, you know, what we're waiting for in order to implement that plan.
Yeah. So, and again, we've touched on this. So there'll be a maintenance plan that is written up for the building, what we're waiting on. And if you look, like, in the building report, a lot of the mechanicals are still being turned on, so to speak, connected and turned on. And once there's substantial completion of the building, then there is a handoff to the district. At that point, the manufacturers of all that equipment and over all of the preventive maintenance schedules, all of that documentation which goes into your maintenance plan, that'll be drafted up, you know. So at this point, that's what's deficient. You know, we've looked at staffing from a square footage standpoint, you know, why I say we, the PPM that we contracted to put it together, looked at it, and we feel we're pretty much in the same area as far as the number of staffing, the duty chain. Because it's, you know, like, outside, you're looking at turf as opposed to grass. There's a little bit of grass, but, the stuff like that. But the ins and outs of the preventive maintenance that we looked at, a lot of that is going to be built with those plans that come from the equipment manufacturer. But they will be public documents in a preventive maintenance package for reference. I'd say first before I use accountability, but absolutely accountability for years to come, but it'll be public document. I know Jenny, we had talked about, you know, like, funding, you know, make sure that people understood, like, from a district standpoint, right, maintenance of effort right now. So how our funding cannot decrease. And I don't know if the superintendent wants to touch on this, but I do believe that there's legislation that is kind of being kicked around about municipalities funding more so on a per pupil basis so that it's not, so districts aren't left waiting and hoping that their city or town supports them. They'll, you know, we'll see if that gets any traction. But, you know, right now, the protection of maintenance of effort where your city or town cannot decrease what they gave you year over year. But, you know, when you have an influx of students, that increases your cost, doesn't guarantee you an increase in your allocation from the city. But, you know, when I heard about that proposal, it's, it's an interesting, you know, protection that could come into play so that if you do have an increase in your enrollment, then it would obligate the municipality to fund first, too. So, but right now, maintenance of effort is our protection and, you know, doing, being fluid in the way that we structure and restructure and reallocate, so.
So can I, I just want to say something, Max. I'm gonna have Tony send you our five-year facilities plan that addresses all of our schools because we had to do that for RIDE in order to get approval for stage one and two of our project for the high school. In there, we had to use the Jacobs Report, which was a statewide report where they went through every single school in the state of Rhode Island. And they numbered various buildings as far as what needed to be taken care of, one, two, three, four, and five. So then we had to take our five-year plan, and we had to take care of all the ones and twos from all of the different schools immediately within that five years. I think that'll give you a better idea of the individual plans. It's in that facilities plan, Tony. So if you could send him that facilities plan, and then if you have any questions, just call Tony directly in regards to that. But that's a requirement from RIDE, and so we have to follow that. And then every year, we have to report on what we have done for that year.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that would be very helpful.
Thank you.
Just to confirm what you, my cutting someone off, I'm sorry. I keep hearing feedback. Just to confirm what you had said, Joe, regarding the company, the separate outside company that's gonna be creating a maintenance plan for the high school. They're a professional, as you said, they specialize in doing that, right, and all that?
Yeah, they're a property management company, so, you know, business would hire them to manage a facility, their business. You know, let's say, you know, an office building, you know, may hire this company to run their facility. And with that, they would staff it and have, you know, preventive schedules and budgets and so forth. So, yeah, this is what they do for.
I just wanted the public to know that. Thank you.
So, Joel, would there be, like, a bidding out process for that company? Or, like, have we already set something up with them? And is there, like, a name for the company, or is that, is that, like, not public information yet?
So, so if we, we approve the contract, the school committee did, I forget how many months back, to have them develop the maintenance plan as well as help us write the job description for the client manager that we hired. It's a company, I keep saying PPM, it's, it's Peregrine Property Management Group. Different from Peregrine is our OPM, that's a separate company from the PPM, from Peregrine. Yeah, Peregrine Property Management. So, yes. So again, that's their property management organization. So now they're not going to be running, so we're not going out to bid for anyone to actually run. The contract that school committee was presented with and approved was for them to just develop that plan, that maintenance plan. As well as that job description. Next item.
The next item is action items.
Yeah, consider and vote to approve the bill list. Discussion.
Chairman Montero, if I may ask the committee before you vote on the bill list, there is one change that needs to be made. Check number seven-two-six-six, there was a duplicate invoice that was inadvertently included in that. So check number seven-two-six-six will be for two-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. That's on page three of the checklist.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have other questions, comments? Have a motion?
I make a motion.
Is that you? Jessica, was that you?
Yeah, that was me. Oh, yeah, I'm on.
So motion by Ms. Bochane. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Brandl, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Can you pose? Carrie's. Next is consider and vote to approve the use of school buildings, school grounds.
I vote.
We have a motion to approve by Bochane. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Azanaro. Charles, she just got you under the wire. She came under the wire. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Can you pose? Carrie's. Consider and vote to approve the new math curriculum.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Chonas to approve.
Can I second? I just want one quick question from Dr. Bell. One quick question. This was, was this KDA five?
K five.
K five, okay. Thank you. A second.
Okay, so a motion by Mr. Chonas, second by Ms. Bochane, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Can you pose? Carrie's. Consider and vote to approve the purchase of CTC using Perkins Funds.
Can we say what we're buying?
Do you want to explain this?
Sure, sure. Thank you. Yeah, so with the Perkins Funds, we have to dedicate them to certain aspects of the career technical program. Um, yeah, so with the Perkins Funds, uh, we have to dedicate them to certain aspects of the career technical program. Um, lots of the equipment that's in there is specialized. Um, and so there aren't that many vendors that you can go go to. Um, we are fortunate to to be able to purchase, uh, to access pricing from the Massachusetts Higher Ed Consortium. Um, and so what we're asking you for tonight is to approve us to uh go to MECC, Massachusetts Higher Ed Consortium. Um, to to get the pricing, well, actually, we do have the pricing, but to approve these purchases. Uh, the first item is for a digital microscope from Ward Science, uh, and that is for the forensics program. Um, and so that cost is about twenty, twenty thousand dollars. Uh, the the next item, uh, which we are very excited about, which will be for the Allied Health Program. Is a ambulance rescue squad simulator. Um, this simulator will become a part of the programming. The city fire department uh is also very excited um to have this at their use. Um, so this is going to be a really good asset to our health occupations program. Uh, to allow students who want to maybe pursue becoming an E M T. Uh, will be will be having an actual ambulance simulator in one of the classrooms. Um, and there's about about two or three vendors in the United States that do this. Um, so we were fortunate to get hooked up with the rescue simulation products who are currently installing a unit at East Greenwich. Um, high school, uh, that total cost of seventy-two thousand dollars, that's for everything, that's the install, that's for the. Uh, the compartment trays that go along the wall, that's for all the cots, uh, that's for everything. Um, so we are, we're, we are very excited to to have this uh become part of our our program. Uh, for the construction program, I have to be honest, um, a CNC machine that goes above me. Uh, I'm not quite sure what that does, uh, so that that's for twenty thousand dollars.
It's a fine tuning cutter.
Oh, thank you Superintendent Crowley, thank you.
I only know because the author has has told me what it was.
Excellent, excellent, um, and then lastly, for the graphics um program. Uh, we're looking to get a really a industry-based, um, high-speed color printing, copying, scanning unit. Uh, to do binding, booklet mating, cutting, folding, does everything except make a drink. Um, and so for Delia's um program, so the cost of that is about seventy-two thousand dollars.
Craig, maybe the CNC can do that for you.
Maybe, maybe, yeah.
So, um, Craig, question on the uh. First, CNC is is that, do they have one that's broken now?
It's for welding.
Yes.
One in the construction program, um, and. The the equipment for the graphics, is that a purchase or a lease?
Uh, that is a purchase.
Okay, that's interesting, is is leasing an option?
Um, no, because with the Perkins Funds, we we have to use it within that year.
Yeah, that is funding.
Okay, all right, um. And you know, so on the the uh, the mock ambulance thing, I, you know, speak to that a little bit. Superintendent and I went to pont against it that, you know, they have one, they've had one for a couple of years now and. Uh, you know, they incorporated into their phys, phys ed curriculum, um, with CPR training and, you know, so forth. But as as Craig said, you know, with the local fire department being excited because, you know, our our intention is, again, this building. Will be a community building um with an expansion of of night classes and, you know, it it presents an opportunity to do. You know, E M T classes for adults at night and so forth, uh, there's a lot of different collaborations. We can jump into uh with this as well to expand those offerings beyond uh East Province High School community, but the East Province community as a whole, so. Thanks for that explanation. So that, do we have a motion?
I'll make a question.
We have a motion by Mr. Randall.
Ladies first, whoever that was.
It was like all three of us, I think.
So, uh, so we have, this has an arrow on the motion, Mr. Randall, uh, with Bocheane on the second. I'll bump you out back, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any pose, I did that out of order, but. Um, okay, Craig, if you, item five through twelve, I believe there, uh. From last night's meeting that that were approved by the building committee, that would be AI three invoices, Paragon invoices, Gilbane invoices, Stephen Turner Inc. Felsch Engineering, National Grid, W B Mason and uh city reimbursement uh to East Province School.
Sorry, I muted, uh, do you just want the total?
Uh, if you could do each, just.
Sure, absolutely, um, so AI three basic services, hundred and twenty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-four cents. AI three extra services, eighteen thousand, four hundred dollars. Gilbane Building Company, five million, nine hundred and twenty-two thousand, seventeen dollars and ninety-nine cents. Paragon Group LLC, fifty-nine thousand dollars. Stephen Turner Inc., three thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. Felsch Engineering, eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-six cents. National Grid, sixty-one thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars. W B Mason, one thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars and six cents. And the East Province School Department, six hundred dollars for a grand total of six million, two hundred thousand, nine dollars and sixty-five cents.
Thank you. We have a motion.
To move.
Motion by Mr. Chonis, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Randall, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Can you pose? Motion carries. Next, we have consider and vote to approve job descriptions for the administrative assistants of a high school. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Randall, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Miss Azanaro, and Superintendent, if you can just, um, just double check on that nurse office cover.
I will.
That being said, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, can you pose? Motion carries. And final, consider and vote to approve the additional D for Waddington School.
I made a motion in two thousand and eighteen for this, so I will make a motion in twenty twenty-one for this to approve.
Very strong motion by Miss Bocheane, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Miss Azanaro, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Can you pose? Carries. Next item, please.
Next item is public comments to non agenda items.
Do you have any?
Daniel Henigan. I'm being told that my son cannot attend the Waddington for in-person learning against the law. My son is entitled to a free and appropriate education, in-person is the option that we are choosing. Accommodations need to be made effective Monday in Rhode Island. Capacity on school buses will increase to seventy-five percent, lunch tables may be a bit more crowded as well as caps on cafeteria capacities are also loosened. Rhode Island daycare centers can also reopen at full capacity. In classrooms, meanwhile, the permitted distance between desks is decreasing. According to the Rhode Island Department of Education, schools can now opt to reduce social distancing to three feet down from the previous recommendation of six. I expect my son to be in the Waddington School immediately, thank you, Dr. Henigan.
There are no additional comments.
Thank you, Ben. It's all we have.
Any announcements from the committee? Again, we we've heard from Superintendent with regards to Memorial Day weekend, nine to two thirty, the. Existing high school will be open for a public walkthrough, first floor only because the elevator does not work. But there will be uh some type of a guided for COVID compliant uh access to view the building on that day. We have teacher appreciation night coming up, I know, I'm going to forget the night, but it's actually it's Monday night. Um, at six P M or seven?
Six.
Six. And then we have the.
City Council.
Awards is is coming up on the third.
Mm-hmm, City Council on Tuesday.
Thank you, City Council to uh the eighteenth to uh approve two of the contracts of the district that have been approved by the school committee. I will, I will, I want to applaud the uh East Province High School Theater Company.
Oh.
For the final musical to be performed in that high school auditorium. Uh, they performed Mama Mia, yes, I'm a proud father of.
He was, he was great, yeah.
Thank you, yeah.
Everyone was great, by the way, it was amazing.
You know, and, you know, to think about, they struggled coming through this just to do to rehearse with COVID and so forth. And they get up expecting to do, you know, two shows and after the first show, they have a COVID incident and it gets delayed and they didn't even know. You know, it was a few days before they got the call to say, hey, we are going to do another show. And it was like, all right, wait, and like one day of rehearsing and then perform. Um, so I I think they, they may just had a blast, which was really cool to see that the kids really having fun, so. Um, I want to thank Mr. LaSorsa and uh Mr. Rapp and and all the other staff, uh. Uh, the silver, doing the the sound and lighting and so forth, but it's a great time and again, the last event, so they did it justice.
May nineteenth is also the Career and Technical Center Awards Night, Honors Night, it's going to be at Pierce Field at six o'clock. And April first is the Senior Promet Roads on the Batucic, though those are upcoming events this month as well.
Excellent, thank you.
We've got an invitation.
All right, next item, please.
Next item is adjournment.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Miss Bocheane, do we have a second?
Second, ma'am.
Second by Mr. Randall, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, can you pose?